Good afternoon. We'll call the regular meeting of the Board of Regents of the Delmar College District to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, May 10th. I'm going to call roll to establish our quorum. Regent Adami?
Here.
Regent Everett?
Here.
Regent Bennett?
Here.
Regent Garza?
Here.
Regent Hutchison?
Here.
Regent Kelly?
Here.
Regent Turner cannot be with us today. Regent Villarreal?
Here.
Hi, I'm Carol Scott, and we have a quorum and can conduct business. Please join me all, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Regent Garza, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll join the Board of Regents in reading our Delmar College Vision Statement. Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities. Delmar College is streaming our live audio and video from this official Board of Regents meeting on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered closed session by statute. At this time, we have an opportunity for general public comment on items that are not listed for separate consideration on our agenda. Is there anyone here to speak during public comment? Seeing none, we will move on with our start of our regular agenda, and we appreciate the opportunity to start with recognitions. And our first one is going to be presented by Ms. Patricia Benavides Dominguez.
This time, I would like to recognize Rita Hernandez. She is our interim dean of student engagement and recruitment?
Retention.
Retention? Sorry. Rita, come here. Rita has been nominated to participate in this year's National Community College Hispanic Council. It was, the NCCHC was established 36 years ago, and their mission includes preparation and support of Hispanic leadership in, in America for community college leaders. The council continues its efforts to develop leaders for the challenges that lie ahead in higher ed by offering a Leadership Fellows Program. And so she starts this June with several meetings throughout the year, and she will make wonderful connections with other leaders in the community college world.
Thank you, VP Dominguez and board, and Dr. Eskamia. I am honored and empowered by the support and encouragement that I have seen at Delmar College, and especially from those who have attended before me, including VP Dominguez, Dr. Villarreal, Dr. Riveda, and Dr. Christina Wilson. So, thank you for the support and the opportunity.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Dominguez, and if you would stay with us and give us our student success report for the day.
Okay. Okay, Delmar was invited to participate in the Trello survey due to our participation in the Texas Success Center's Pathways work. The focus of our Guided Pathways Institute was keeping students on the pathway. The survey results speak to understanding our students' basic needs. Delmar College participated in the Fall of 2021 implementation of the Trello company's Student Financial Wellness Survey. The survey is self-reported, online survey that speaks, that seeks to document the financial well-being and student success indicators of post-secondary students at Delmar College and across the nation. The survey was open beginning October 25th, 2021, and closed on November 15th, 2021. A hundred and four institutions participated in the survey. Seventy-one of them were two-year institutions, 20 were public four-year institutions, and 13 were private, non-for-profit institutions. As the COVID-19 pandemic has proven, maintaining student financial wellness is key to keeping students enrolled. The survey was administered a year and a half into the pandemic, during a time when vaccinations were allowing students to return to in-person learning, but the pandemic was continuing to have a strong impact. The survey of metrics for Delmar. Volunteer surveys, particularly those delivered online, are unlikely to achieve high response rates. Lower response rates make surveys more susceptible to response bias. For example, the risk of taking the surveys that don't reflect the views of the total population. The Student Financial Wellness Survey obtains data on both the total population and responders. This allows for comparisons to determine if, based on the characteristics, responders mirror those of the total population. For Fall of '21, sample, sample of respondents at Delmar had some characteristics different from the population. Tests for representation indicated statistically significant difference between the sample of the population. For gender, female respondents were overrepresented in the sample. And age, respondents 25 years or older were overrepresented in the sample. Tests for represented, representation found no statistically significant differences between the sample and population. For enrollment and intensity, credit hours earned, and race and ethnicity. The next several slides will be on key findings. This particular key finding is on perceptions of institutional support. Students had mixed feelings about how supported they felt by their institution. Almost, almost a third of the respondents, 32%, believed their school was aware that their, that their, of their financial challenges, but a larger percentage, 38%, disagreed or strongly disagreed that their school was aware. More than a third, 39%, reported that the faculty understood their financial situation, but a smaller portion, 26%, did not agree with the statement. Students had mixed feelings about how much their school works to make, to make things more affordable. 67% agreed or strongly agreed that Delmar made tuition more affordable. While over a third of respondents, 34%, believed their school made textbooks more affordable, 43% disagreed or strongly disagreed with that statement. Paying for college. While many students use savings or income to pay for college, it is rarely enough. Few students today pay their way through college. 53% use their personal savings to pay for college, and nearly 62% reported using current employment as a resource. However, only 5% paid for college solely with their savings and current employment. When self-help, family support, and grant assistance prove insufficient, students turn to various forms of credit. Student loans help support nearly a third of the students, 29%, attending Delmar College. These loans typically come from government consumer protections, not found with credit cards. Student loan debt, credit card use, and risky borrowing. 29% of the respondents at Delmar College reported borrowing student loans to pay for school. Many students were worried about their debt. Students were uncomfortable with the amount of student loan debt they have borrowed, even while they're still in school. 53% of the respondents that borrowed said they had more student loan debt than they expected at this point. Many student borrowers were not confident that they were able to repay their loans. 69% of the respondents that borrowed were not at all confident or somewhat confident that they would be able to pay off their debt acquired while students. Many students used credit card to pay off their balances each month. 72% said that they, they would be paying the bill on time, but 26% agreed or strongly disagreed that they would, that they will fully pay their balance off each month, occurring interest with potential high rates. Financial security. While most students said they were open to seeking help with financial decisions, many had not spoken to a college official. Of those who had, many sought the help from college officials who were not experts in financial aid. 62%, they would seek financial support services like financial coaching if offered by their institution. More than two in five, 43% of the students, had not spoken with anyone at their institution about their financial struggles. When they speak to someone, they are more likely to speak with financial advisors. However, many sought financial advice from officials who were not experts in financial aid. Many students reported struggling financially while enrolled. 78% said they were experiencing financial difficulties or challenges in college. Nearly 71% said they would have trouble getting $500 in cash or credit to meet unexpected need in, in the next month. Or 18%, they would not be able to get that money in the, in the allotted timeframe. Basic, basic needs security. Alarmingly, over 53% of respondents showed signs of either low food security or very low food security. Concerns related to food affordability and sufficiency were common. More than half, 54%, indicated they could not afford to eat a balanced meal, while 38% ate less than they felt they should. Students struggle with housing-related challenges. More than half the students showed signs of being housing insecure, a condition that can significantly impact academic abilities, overall well-being, and health. More than one in 10 respondents experienced homelessness in the prior 12 months or starting at an institution. The most common expression of homelessness occurred when students temporarily stayed with a relative or a friend or couch-surfed for housing. Mental health challenges. Many respondents displayed signs of major depressive disorder. More than 41% indicated they were likely experiencing a major depressive disorder. Though the respondents responses to the set of questions, almost half of the resident, of the respondents indicated they were experiencing generalized anxiety disorder. In this survey, respondents were likely facing mental challenges or more likely to report certain life circumstances. Higher percentages of these were students. Concluding. College is designed to be challenging. It builds knowledge, develops skills, reveals character. Students who confront these financial threats, often while balancing work and study, must become adept in managing scarce time, moderating material wants, securing basic needs, and maintaining concentration to master their academic requirements. Colleges that deeply understand the financial challenges of their students can best structure programs, initiatives, and communication to bolster student success while optimizing administrative efficiency.
Any questions about the survey?
I have a question about our, the comparative data with other public two-year institutions. Is that sample size similar to ours? I was just trying to get a sense of the universe. Is that a national public two-year? Do you have a sense of that comparative data?
I don't, I don't know who the, the 71 other two-year public institutions are, but I would suspect that they are nationwide. I can get back to you on that.
They would have to be, because there's only 50 in Texas, so that would assume that there's a sampling from around the country of 71 institutions. I doubt that they're breaking it down by campus, in which case it could be in the state, but I think you could assume that this is national, national participation.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Dominguez, for bringing this to us. Very informative. Dr. Eskamia, please give us your college president's report.
Yes, ma'am, madam chair. Good afternoon, everyone. On April 28th, we, Delmar College hosted the Texas Association of Community Colleges South Texas Regional Workforce and Educational Partnership Meeting. That's a mouthful. At the Solomon P. Ortiz Center, where I served as both keynote speaker and master of ceremonies. It was a lot of fun. It really was, to bring my colleagues in from around the, this part of the state of Texas. This was an important regional, regional convening of South Texas community colleges. The topic was regional workforce needs and the possibilities for the development of community colleges, community college financing as it relates to workforce. So lots of partnerships, lots of talk about the commission work that we're doing and the like. I especially want to take this opportunity to thank all the members who, who came from across South Texas, but especially our local industrial and, and healthcare leadership members, such as Paul Fritch with Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, Dennis Black with Steel Dynamics, Eric Evans with Corpus Christi Medical Center, and Kevin LaSalle with Valero. They all sat on a panel and did a fantastic job and, and really had some candid conversation that, that really assisted local administrators and faculty members from community colleges across South Texas to really stimulate that conversation and put some, put some action plans in place. Again, being, all that being housed at, at TAC, or Texas Association, Community Colleges, Colleges offices up in Austin. Next, I'd like to also tell you that in late April, the, in association with Texas Association of Community Colleges, I attended the American Association of Community Colleges Annual Convention. I attended the, it kicked off on April 30th in New York City. I delivered my, I delivered two presentations. The first was with my co-presenter, Jacob Friday, past president of TACC. And our topic was rebuilding Texas community colleges from the financial core. Had largely to do, is a big infomercial, really, about, again, the work we were doing, that we are doing with the commission. And so that was a lot of fun to, to present there. And then I also did a second presentation with Dr. Martha Ellis, good friend and colleague, former president of Lee College, is also interim TAC CEO. And so, just a lot of affiliation, lots of great partnerships with her. And our topic was Texas Re-Skilling and Upskilling Through Education, otherwise known as the TRU initiative. Talked about what the state was doing and how that developed from the last legislative session. And I was very proud, and I, I hope y'all can hear, I hope y'all really know that when I, when I get on a stage and get an opportunity to brag about Delmar College, I don't hold back. And so we were able to talk about the TRU initiative here at Delmar College, and especially on, on, on how it's, it developed and, and how it's developing here. And I think we can, we can all look forward to a, a true 2.0 in the future, because it's receiving such positive feedback from across the state. Next, the college, I just, this is an FYI, and this is very timely, since we just had the tour of our Oso Creek Campus for our Regents this morning and various media outlets. But I wanted everybody to know that, that priority that the, the colleges received our temporary certificate of occupancy for the Oso Creek Campus. And so that's, that's just one of those little milestones that, that make all the difference for us. And, and so we're hitting our benchmarks and working very closely with our, with our, our colleagues in city and, and local government and the like. This moves us one step closer to starting summer two classes, albeit restricted in, in the summer two classes this summer. And as we were talking about, that we would onboard and, and bring onboard more, more expansive offerings in the fall, and then we are looking for a robust offering in the spring of 2023. So, just kind of a reminder of what's going on there. Finally, spring commencement. Hey, we're getting back to a good old-fashioned, real graduation, face-to-face. And as a reminder, the college is holding its first in-person commencement ceremony in over two years, on Friday, May 20th, at 7:00 PM at the American Bank Center. The keynote speaker will be Dr. Osbert Blow, Chief Executive Officer of Krista Spahn Health System. Very appropriate to our time with the big health crisis and so forth that we've just experienced and somewhat still experiencing. This ceremony will be live-streamed on the college's website and social media services. This concludes my report. I'm glad to answer any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Eskamia. Are there any questions for Dr. Eskamia? Seeing none, we will move on to our staff reports. Our first one is regarding our compensation evaluation and comparison staff report conducted by Weaver. Ms. Tammy McDonald is going to introduce that for us.
Thank you, Chair. The college engaged Weaver to assist with conducting a compensation analysis for staff positions. This project continues to be a work in progress as we sort through and validate comparative data. But today, we have Dan Graves and Brandon Tanos with Weaver that will provide you with the status report and general information about this project. Dan, Brandon? Thank you.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Tammy. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Regents. Happy to present the status of this project. As you all know, part of our internal audit plan allows for consultation to management for special projects such as this. I think when we, we all know in our business and what we're hearing in the news with, of course, the great resignation and people moving around, the question is, is often, you know, how are we paying our people and the benefits we provide to get the best talent? So part of that, definitely with that discussion going in, to do this compensation analysis, which includes benefits, and we'll walk through that. So, of course, the scope of our consultation procedures was really to provide college administration with a comparison of the college's compensation to other Texas community colleges, along with private industry in this local region. That comparison included approximately about 400 staff positions, including exempt, non-exempt salary, and hourly folks, and also the benefits that are paid for by the college to the employees. So that compensation comparisons included salaries and benefits of both public and private sector entities in the DMC region. And we'll talk more about what that region encompasses. So we compared the current college wages by position to other Texas colleges, along with private sector entities within this Corpus Christi region. We used two primary sources. The first one is the TASB 2021-22 Salary Survey, which is specific to community colleges. The participation rate of 34 out of the 50 Texas community colleges participated, so about 68%. And the way that that survey results comes out, we use the 50th percentile for the average pay range and use a standard workdays in our comparison of 2,080 hours. So when you look at that salary, you'll have 25 percentile, 50, and 75, with the different, we understand of how pay ranges can change depending on the colleges and location, using the 50th percentile and using the average there for our comparisons. For the private sector wages, this kind of information can usually be a little bit more difficult, especially for a college to be able to obtain. Were accumulated from the Economic Research Institute Salary Assessor Tool that we have within our firm, that we evaluated for the Corpus Christi region. So we're able to actually assess parameters on which industries and the region that we want to evaluate for comparison purposes. So for the benefit information, benefit information for the college was also compared to both higher education and private sector employers. That comparison focused on the primary areas, including retirement, leave, such as sick leave, PTO, holiday time, healthcare, including employee independence, life insurance, along with tuition and education reimbursement. Now, the benefits offered but fully paid by the employees were excluded from this comparison. So those are things that are extras that a, a organization may provide, such as pet insurance or things like that, but that are fully paid by the employee and not the employer. So since those are, can run and all such, again, it's, we, we left those out of this comparison. Comparative information was provided by our independent insurance brokers for higher education institutions in Texas cities. That was also inclusive of all industry groups. There was two main comparisons that came out through, through that benefit. That was both higher education and, of course, other Texas cities. For higher education, you will see here the seven states that were evaluated, along with the eight different Texas cities in this kind of geographic region, if you think about up to San Antonio and, and down to the coastal bend area. And so for our status of where we're at today, our preliminary comparisons have been reviewed with HR. We've obtained that feedback, and we're actually in the process of some, performing some more detailed comparisons to really provide that more apples-to-apples comparison. As you all may know, trying to compare something like salary and benefits from a college to maybe a petrochemistry industry around here could be a little bit more difficult. So we are working on having more of those apples-to-apples comparisons. For wages, approximately 200 exempt and 200 non-exempt positions were being reviewed right now. For most positions, what we have found is within, that the actual pay for the colleges within the bands of other colleges that we've evaluated, and generally within the private sector pay bands. So definitely using the 50th percentile, looking at the average, we are, the college is within those pay bands that we would anticipate. We didn't see the extreme outliers one way or the other. There are no findings or recommendations at this time from this status. Again, we are still working through that data set with management, and as they are further evaluated, we will present those at a later date. It is anticipated by the next budget workshop in July that we will have the data validation completed. So again, more to the apples-to-apples comparison. Also, if there's any outliers identified, being able to explain those of why those may be different. And for instance, there may be some cases where you have a position that performs multiple roles, has multiple hats, where in comparison to another industry, it may be they only have one function. So going to identify those and provide some explanation, and of course, recommendations for any long or short-term goals. And finally, on our benefits, I would say that the college is generally in line, if not greater than other higher education institutions, including with more leave, holiday time, and so forth, and benefits are generally greater than the private sector. And again, with more leave and, and those type of benefits. We'll see that, for example, especially in healthcare, the college is fully pays for the, the employee. That is something very rare in the private industry, more common in colleges, but definitely when you look at the benefits that are offered by the college so far, we are seeing that they are greater than some others. That completes our status of the, of our project right now. If there's any immediate questions, we're happy to answer those.
I do have a question related to your comparative data. So you use the TASB Salary Survey. I'm aware that the Texas Association of Community Colleges does a salary comparison that I think has a higher number of participants. I don't know the, the process that they use to gather that, that information, but we have used that to do our CEO salary comparison. So that is one piece of the question. And the other is the Texas Community College Teachers Association, and does it have any comparative data as opposed to TASB? I was just curious that TASB was used as opposed to community college-specific organizations?
For the Texas Community College Teacher Association, they only do faculty. They do not do any other non-faculty surveys. And then for the Texas Association of Community Colleges, they do what they consider, and it's a very small group of what they call key administrators, and that's the only data that they ask for. So it's a very, very small group. So TASB was one of the, and they just started doing this a few years ago, TASB did, that collects pretty much all staff positions in all areas, and, and we were happy to see that this year, 68% of the colleges participated.
Staff and faculty, or just staff?
Just staff.
Just staff?
Yes.
So do we do a separate faculty comparison?
The faculty comparison is through that TCTA, the Texas Community College Teachers Association. That's, that's, for faculty, that's our comparator. And that's, that's, they were not looking for faculty. They are only doing staff analysis, not faculty.
That answers my question. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Regent Hutchison?
Yes, you made the conclusion that generally we're in line. I think that was the, the broad stroke, and I understand you're going to do a little deeper dive on some things. So will, will we find out what things are not in line? Is there a way to identify if it's a particular department?
Definitely. That's the goal, and, and what we're working on too, is when we present that, there'll be some visualizations. I think when you're looking at this amount of data, it's very difficult. We've created some pivot We've created some pivot tables and charts where you can actually look at a line-by-side comparison. So we're really kind of focusing on those that look a little different, definitely whether one way or the other, if not in band, working with management to determine, is there a reason? Sometimes it could be a title difference, you know? If we call one person one thing, but really, they may be at a different level depending on how the comparative data set is. So we're identifying those and trying to really explain those away. But definitely, we will be able to show some key kind of positions and being able to have visuals to show that and have a discussion of maybe possibly why and what needs to be done with our, we're talking about recommendations for short and long-term goals.
Right. More to come. Okay.
And we'll definitely give all the detailed recommendations to Tammy and her group. But we'll present, you know, more broad, like for instance, if there's a technical area that we think might need to be adjusted, or there's some differences, then we'll bring that and display that. But we won't show you 400 individual comparisons to make you sift through.
Yes.
Dr. Eskimia?
Yeah, I'd like to put on the table for consideration as future sentences, whichever it fits, about our college and the challenges, geography is a big deal. And I know that I have parallels with our sister institutions in the rural areas. We have, you know, we are two and a half hours from any major. And so that in itself, when it comes to, is always an important challenge that we consider. So I put that out there. I didn't see it here. I may have been reading something else as y'all were moving through, but I hope that that's part of our future conversation as we move, because those challenges are, we always say, you got to mean to come to Corpus Christi. And especially when it comes to recruiting, you know, faculty and staff from all over the country, it's, challenges where all the things of being a close town, two and a half hours from any major, major concentration of local potential talent. So I'd just like to put that out there and remind our Regents that that is always a tough nut to crack. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for being with us today. We're now going to bring up Mr. Garcia to talk about our 2023 budget update.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board. This is the first of many budget conversations with the goal of delivering a more comprehensive budget plan by the, by August for board approval. The college is currently at the midpoint of the budget plan whereby budget requests have been submitted by the executive team, and we are now under, and they are now under review. This process includes narrowing the gap between the budget request and the financial resources in order to, that best supports the college's strategic plan. The phase also includes working with Dr. Wilson's office to validate that the resource allocation is aligned with the operating unit assessment plan. This unit assessment plan summarizes tactical activities with outcomes that supports the college's strategic plan. Today's PowerPoint slide deck includes preliminary estimates of revenues and a few tidbits of the budget request. The college will deliver a more comprehensive budget plan at our workshop plan for July 26th. Ms. Landrum will now kick us off with the budget calendar on the next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. So now we're going to go over those five phases of our budget calendar. So the first phase is the planning phase, which starts in October and goes through January. So during this time, a tuition and fee assessment is completed, the budget calendar is developed, and our budget sub worksheets are distributed to our budget managers. So these worksheets are used to gather any information on technology, facility requests, equipment, or marketing requests. So we also provide budget training for all of our budget managers, and budget summary worksheets go out to each of these areas. So the data informed decision phase, that's in February. So during this time, the budget sub worksheets that were submitted, they go to the budget office, and then we compile that information and we review it. So also during this time, budget summary worksheets are submitted from the chairs up to the deans and directors. So the review and recommendation phase is from March through July. So during this time, budget summary worksheets are submitted from the deans and directors to their respective executive team member for review and approval, and then submitted to the budget office. Budget requests are cross-checked with the strategic unit assessment plan, and final salary and new position requests are received. The preliminary revenue assumptions are updated with the best available information, and if necessary, budget requests are adjusted with the new information. So in July, we'll have that workshop on July 26th with more detail. So next is the budget approval phase, which is in August. So at this point in time, the estimated property tax, tuition and fees, and state appropriation revenues are final based on the best available information. There is also an agreement around the technology, employee, and other operating needs that are within the revenue constraints for the next budget year. The approval process includes various legislative requirements relating to transparency in our financial budget for the, with the budget approval, board approval as the final outcome. So the final step is the property tax approval phase, which is also in August. And during this phase, the approval process also includes various legislative requirements relating to transparency in our property tax assessment with the board approval as the final outcome. Are there any questions?
Just want to make note to the board members to stick those dates on your calendar as a hold for now, or Natalie or Delia will send those out to us, July 26th, probably noon time. Our regular meeting on August 9th, and then a special called meeting for the hearing and adoption on August 23rd, probably around noon time again.
Okay. Now, Mr. Garcia will continue with the top of mind in a period of uncertainty.
So the effects of our continued changing operating environment to the college's limited financial resources is top of mind. We are nearing two years of the COVID-19 pandemic that has caused much disruption in the lives of students, employees, and the college's operations. The fiscal and monetary policies introduced during the pandemic, such as the CARES Act and the low interest environment, provide much needed, delivered much-needed emergency financial assistance. Fast forward today, the same fiscal and monetary policies adopted during the pandemic are expiring or changing, causing a certain level of financial uncertainty for the college. As previously reported, the district experienced a very healthy housing market through the pandemic, with rising property values driven in part by the low interest rate and tremendous demand for housing. We are now at an inflection point whereby the Fed's plan to rein in escalating inflation includes multiple increases to the Fed funds rate over a two-year period. A few tidbits about the Fed funds rate. The Fed rate increases tends to be driven in part by borrowing costs relating to credit cards, auto, student, and home mortgages. The Fed's first rate increase of 25 basis points occurred this past March of 2022. The single change already has made its way through the credit markets, causing some level of disruption in the real estate sector. The second increase of 50 basis points from the Feds occurred this past week. The Mortgage Bankers Association recently reported a jump in the 30-year fixed-rate mortgage rates to a high of 4.6%. This is a jump from January 21, reported rate of 2.81%, as reported by Freddie Mac Mortgage Market Survey. This jump in mortgage rates is adding downward pressures, could add downward pressures in the new home sales, or is adding downward pressures. The National Association of Home Builders reported a decline in the southern region of our nation of 13.9% on a year-by-year-to-date basis. The college is not certain how aggressive the Fed hikes will be, and if they could result in further increase in the cost of home mortgages in the near future. And the college is not certain if the increase in the cost of borrowing will result in either a leveling or decline in property valuations, resulting in downward pressures in our property tax collections. However, the college will continue to monitor our tax collection and plan for unexpected changes. Mr. John Johnson will shortly discuss current trending property tax collections. Our other possible disruptions in the housing market includes expiring mortgage forbearance and rental assistance and eviction moratoriums that will drive up the number of evictions and mortgage default rates. This might also cause a leveling or a decline in property valuations that could also drive downward pressures in our property tax collection in the near future. Now let's pivot to the college's operating activities. A forward motion includes an upswing in operating costs attributed to a back-to-normal transition, growth, expansion, such as the Oso Creek, the recommendations from the compensating commission assessment paired with elevated inflation. The college will continue to synthesize these budget items and will have more comprehensive presentation at the budget workshop plan for July 26th. The upside, the college has already built a certain level of financial agility. If we go back two years ago, the board kindly approved the risk reserve that will help us navigate through most downside effects or downside disruptors to our revenues. More to come on that. Are there any questions? So then, Mr. Johnson will now lead us into the discussion on the college's revenues.
As has been the case in prior years, the initial revenue assumption use a conservative approach to estimating what budgeted revenues might be using historical information and preliminary estimates of district property valuation growth. A 10% reduction in pre-pandemic enrollment levels has been included as part of the budget plan. Uncertainty still exists as to when students will begin to fully return to campus due to this issue and the longevity of the epidemic. A $2 increase in district tuition was approved by the board for the upcoming fiscal year. Additional funds received from this increase are estimated to be approximately $280,000. For property taxes, for this initial presentation, we have used a 4% increase in net taxable property values, $300 million in new construction, and the same overall combined tax rate approved in fiscal year 2022. State appropriations, there will be a slight increase in state contributions for insurance and retirement due to new employee hires and salary increases for 2022. Are there any questions on that particular one?
I have a question about the 4% valuation growth.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what the appraisal district has reported is overall average? Because it seems to me, from complaints that I hear, that it's higher than 4%.
Well, you know, I, we had not received the preliminary evaluation from the appraisal district when this report was done. Of course, preliminary, you know, there's a lot of things that haven't been considered when they put out that number. The number that I received was approximately 6%. Normally, when you get a 6% increase in valuations, you're probably going to see somewhere in the net taxable value, somewhere between 5.5 and 5.75 after you back in all the deductions and exemptions and all those types of things. So there's a lot to be considered, you know, before we finalize that number. 4% I do feel is low, but I don't know what the final figure will look like.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Your microphone's not working.
Well, just quickly, say that the 4% is a preliminary placeholder, and we talked about it the other day. We all know that where the valuations are pointed anyway, at least at this point in the game, and so it's a point that we're going to work on and build upon. We do think the numbers are headed where Mr. Johnson is indicating, and so we are in close touch with the appraisal district as well. So just FYI there, starting point.
Thanks, sir. Continue.
All right. Going on to the next slide, under property tax collection rates. The graph included here shows the percentage of taxes collected through March as reported by the Noasis County Tax Office. As you can see, after fiscal year 2019, with the beginning of the pandemic, collections dropped from 95.21% to 92.66 and 92.05 in the subsequent two years. For fiscal year 22, collections have increased to 93.51. In pre-pandemic years, the average percentage of collections needed to meet the college's budget was 95% as of March. In order to offset the reduction seen in collections, the college reduced its collection percentage in fiscal year 21 for budgeting purposes, reduced it by 1.58%. So that, if you put that back into the 93.51, we're back into really 95 toward budget. So I'm really, I really feel like this year will be right on budget. Are there any questions on that particular slide? So using the assumptions that we talked about, you'll notice that, you know, state appropriations did not change. Of course, we had small increases in our insurance and retirement contributions. Tuition and fees with the downward, the reduction in our enrollment from, I'm sorry, from 2019, you'll notice that my enrollment amount for tuition decreased by $1.846 million. Property taxes, using the values that I indicated in my assumptions, that would gain us about $3.6 million, and that would give us a net overall gain of about $2.1 million in our Are there any questions on those slides? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So now to wrap up our presentation, here is a list, and keep in mind, please, this is very preliminary. Also, this number does not include the salary and benefit increases. Because they're doing this study, we hope to have, but we will have by the end of July in our workshop. But the first three items, custodial, utilities, and ground maintenance, those are primarily to the opening of the Oso Creek campus. Then campus police, we hope to have it operational in '23, so that's why that's on there. Security contracts also relate to Oso Creek, but also there was an increase in that contract. Insurance expense does relate partly to Oso, but also to an increase in property tax rates. And then, this next year's an election year. So very preliminary, those add up to $3.4 million. And so what we've done on this last slide, if you notice, we just put "to be determined" because you can see we have a lot of work to do to fit our increases into our available Raul, would you like to?
So that concludes our presentation. There's a lot of work ahead of us, trying to bridge the gap between our revenue funding and the budget request, and we'll definitely have some stronger numbers at our workshop this coming July. Thank you.
I'm a little concerned about waiting until July for the board to have a really robust workshop discussion versus just an update. And so I'm wondering if we could do some of that in June so that the board has strategic initiatives and really understand what it would be, because if we wait until July, then we're just a few days shy of needing to publish our tax rate and other things. So I'm not sure how the rest of you feel, but I think I would like a robust conversation around the assumptions in June.
Absolutely, Madam Chair, and this is a good time for us to prepare and pivot for such a deep, for that dive. That'd be no problem. I mean, it'll be all relative to that timeframe with what we know, we know taxes and those kinds of things. But going back to it from a strategic standpoint, we can, we can frame a conversation in a workshop or whatever, whatever the pleasure is.
So I think we've really got to understand the expense side of it, and I realize there's some things that are some things that are coming, all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, but there, from an expense side, really, we need to understand what your priorities are and why so that then when it becomes time to look at the balance between tax rate and property valuations, we're comfortable with where we're going.
So are you talking about moving the workshop up or just having a presentation in June?
Having an additional workshop discussion, whether it's an actual workshop or during a regular board meeting, we do a deeper dive. I'll let staff determine if they need a morning workshop versus regular meeting, but for us to, for it to be more than an update in June, for us to really understand the strategic assumptions underlying the expense side of the budget.
Okay.
Okay. Any other conversation, questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, we'll work to that end.
Thank you. Thank you all. Speaking of assumptions around enrollment, we're going to bring Patricia Benavides-Dominguez back, and we're going to talk about our strategic enrollment update.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we'll be providing an update to the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan and the activities being conducted. The Strategic Enrollment Management Plan goals were discussed, well, we will discuss today, fit into Goal Two, the college's strategic plan, which is recruitment and persistence. Today, we will provide an update to Goal Two of the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan. The college strives to recruit and attract students to Del Mar and provide resources to support continuous enrollment and achievement of their educational goals. This was a goal that was established in 2019 and remains our goal. The updates provided affect all campuses, Heritage, Winward, and Oso Creek. We are in the first iteration of our Strategic Enrollment Management Plan. The SEM plan was created to align with the strategic plan and follow the Guided Pathways The first goal is connecting with students. This initial interest to enrollment is important, and each campus has unique programs that attract students. In the SEM plan, Goal One, connect and recruitment, there are strategies we are doing to increase access, improve our partnerships, and programs. And one way in which we are doing this is by conducting internal and external surveys. In May of '21, we conducted a survey of our DMC service area and gathered and analyzed those comments. We use that information in the development of the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, and we plan to conduct this survey again this May, later this May. The second strategy is increasing our outreach efforts, leveraging our employees, alumni, and students. This past year, our staff has, have attended football games, La Palmera Mall outreach events, we brought back Discover Del Mar, and many other events utilizing Del Mar employees, faculty, and staff and students. Continuing with recruitment, one of the strategies is to leverage DMC employees as recruitment ambassadors. We have a variety of ways in which we do this. One example is through what we call our walk in a student's shoes. DMC staff and faculty explore the campus and see it from the student's perspective. That Thiesha Wilson, our Director of Advising Initiatives, implemented this before the pandemic, and we are doing this activity again. This activity fosters great dialogue, awareness, and networking. This activity is done at Heritage and Winward and soon at Oso Creek. Another strategy is leveraging our trio programs. Educational Opportunity Center, our EOC, has collaborated with many DMC departments and has participated in many outreach events to recruit prospective students for all campus sites. Additionally, we are happy to have our Financial Aid Outreach Coordinator, Kayla Lopez, making connections with high school students by doing weekly high school visits. Thus far, she has gone to 26 schools this spring and has participated in many community events and FAFSA nights, including FAFSA nights here at the CED. The next two slides, we're going to talk about onboarding, strategies for strategic enrollment management. In Goal Two, onboarding, the college will focus on eliminating the barriers in enrollment, advising, and registration. There are several activities we have implemented that provides a more student-friendly experience, such as having college representatives at the Coastal Compass Weekly, which is at the La Palmera Mall. And also, we have done updates to the Applied Texas that allow students to permit Del Mar to automatically receive the TSI scores and meningitis vaccination shot records, which, when students have those holes, it delays processing and getting to their advisor. So those are big wins for us. Finally, we are increasing onboarding training for all employees in the Student Affairs Division. This is our way of making sure we're all on the same page messaging and making sure students know where to go, and also our processes, our working, our standard operating procedures, which will soon get audited by Weaver Audit, and so glad that they're here today. Also, in a previous slide, I had already indicated about our Financial Aid Outreach Coordinator doing her fine work. Progress. These next two slides, we will go over the progress. How are we making progress with our students at each campus? In the SEM plan, Goal Three, we have been addressing persistence by training faculty and staff with our new technology to monitor and provide early intervention student services by developing and implementing a student needs assessment during our new student orientation. Additionally, we have a care team and has been established to engage in proactive and collaborative approaches to identify and assess students with high needs. Another strategy that we kicked off in fall of 2022 is the Texas Education Consortium of Males of Color. The group has been active and been meeting and has 18 faculty members and staff participating. Continuing with Goal Three, the other actionable items for this strategy are to increase the use of retention alert programs, Civitas, success coaching by providing workshops to faculty and staff. And we are using the National Clearinghouse reports to process more reverse transfer. Currently, we are monitoring 223 possible reverse transfer students, and we will, that number has increased over the years, and we will continue to track those students for five years as long as they are active or if they declare they do not want a degree from Del Mar. Oso Creek, finally, we are excited that we're going to be opening our Oso Creek campus. I hope you enjoyed that tour this morning. We'll be opening Oso Creek on July 11th. Student service will have temporary setup, as explained to you all this morning, on the second floor of the culinary building, and on the first floor, we will have virtual stations on the second floor, and computers will be used to help students complete any applications, installation, installment plans, or financial aid. This summer, we have a mix of core curriculum drafting and architecture courses. We have about 18 that we are monitoring enrollment right now. And in the fall, we have a mix of eight weeks and 16 weeks. Currently, we have 64 courses that are in eight-week setting, and we have 142 courses in the 16-week setting. So we have a good mix of courses that we are monitoring enrollment. We get a daily enrollment report that goes out to all the academia on campus. This concludes my presentation. Do we have any questions?
I have a question. You know I always have a question. The high school's students are now required to fill out FAFSA.
Yes.
Do we have, it's now May, they're going to be graduating in a few short weeks. Do we know the number of students that have, is there a percentage by high school that have successfully filled out that FAFSA? Are they, can they opt out? What is, how are we using that information in helping those students matriculate here or somewhere else?
That is a recruitment tool, and Kayla Lopez, our Financial Aid Outreach Counselor, is going out to those schools, as I said, in the spring. She has done 26 visits to the campus, also probably did this in the fall, I don't have that metric, but I can get that information. Also, I can also report back to you later about how many FAFSA's have come in as a direct result from the high school, you know, recruitment efforts. I don't have that with me today, but I can get that back to you. In terms of opting out, yes, families do have the right to opt out, and I don't know what that metric is either. But we are going to leverage that data. We have, in previous years, just in our regular financial aid processing, we know how many are complete, we know how many FAFSA's are incomplete, and we do deliberate outreach calls, texts, various nudges.
Because the statewide assumption in that was that that was going to increase enrollment in that high school to college matriculation, whether it's community colleges or foreign institutions. And I was just curious as to if there, again, was an early or leading indicator as to whether or not that assumption is going to actually bear out.
I'll have to get back to you on that metric of the high school FAFSA processing.
Any other questions? Thank you. Dr. Halcom is going to lead us through the Instructional Program Review Report. On an annual basis, we hear about this, and sometimes we take action on that report, and sometimes we just hear a report.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Regents, and Dr. Eskemia, every five years, we do a program review. Let me find the right slide, excuse me. And so we do a comprehensive review called the Program Review, and this is faculty-led and supported by administration. The intent is to improve the quality of our programs, and then we also follow our SAC COC principles, as you can see listed in your handout and also the slide above. The Program Review Committee consists primarily of faculty in the program, but can include faculty from outside the program. It can include students and others. Sometimes we've had members that come from A and MCC, for example, on that program review. The Office of Planning and Institutional Effectiveness provides a booklet to the people on the committee, and it's also on our SharePoint, and that book is distributed, and they also lead the training, and they give guidance in the process and serve as mentors. And also, the institutional research area gives a data resource booklet to the committee, and that includes enrollment data, staffing, program demand, degrees awarded. Typically, it takes a year to complete a program review. Once the committee has completed the report, the department chair, divisional dean, and chief academic officer also review the reports and assign a recommendation. The recommendation can be in four categories, which I'll show you in the subsequent slides. And then we do updates to the five-year program review. We do one-year and also two-year updates. There are seven core criteria that are evaluated. We do review of assessment processes, and I'm going to give you some examples of each category. The assessment identifies areas of excellence and areas of needed improvement. Faculty supportive program learning can include faculty and instructional support activities and student satisfaction surveys. Curriculum and integration mobility, an example of this is how easy it is for a student to transfer to other colleges and universities. Student educational intent, what colleges are the students transferring to? And so we look at the nearest college, universities where they are going. We also look at job placement rates. Effective personnel utilization, what are the faculty teaching loads, advising loads, and also we look at the faculty professional development in this category as well. Cost effectiveness, we can include the productivity, fiscal responsibility, resource utilization, operating budget, and equipment cost. The strategic advantage, this is a unique ability to fill a niche for a demonstrated community need and students' access to broader fields of study, for example. And these are just a few examples of each of those seven core criteria. Now, we have four possible outcomes from a program review. They could be positive, conditional, probationary, or terminate a program. Positive, typically, the program does a two-year interim report, and then it's not reviewed again until the next five-year cycle. Conditional status, there is an annual review to correct any deficiencies. Probationary indicates the intent to terminate a program after one year if deficiencies are not corrected. Terminate, program has failed to correct deficiencies after conditional and probationary status. Now, there could be something such as licensing, standards are not met, assessments not done, failure to do the program review. Those are a few examples. Then here's our status for the academic year 2021 to 2022, and you can see that we have solid programs that have received positive status, and you see the 10 there with positive status. One of them was pending review from our last year's report. That was biotechnology. It has since received positive, and we have pending review completion for sociology and social work and physics. Are there any questions about the program review process or the programs that you see?
I see no questions.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Halcom.
Regents, just especially for the newer Regents, this is a process that's being documented. What you just witnessed, this presentation, so if you have any questions, that's good too, because it's all evidence-based processes that are important for documenting for our regional accreditation. Okay? And so what you just experienced is not just an FYI or anything else, it is very intentional and will be useful evidence to be considered in the future. It's how we do things so well with accreditation, and so I just wanted to add that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eskemia. Our next item is a staff report on a petition submitted by Robstown for Del Mar College to consider election for enlarging and extending the boundaries of Del Mar College District to include the territory comprising Robstown Independent School District, and Mr. Rivera and Ms. Keys are going to provide that presentation for us.
Good afternoon, Regents. We've decided to do it, we actually have a bifurcated agenda item. So we're going to give you a staff report at this point to kind of go, give you a general overview of some of the legal background that's involved in something specific that's happened that you'll be able to hear about, and we're going to update you on. But that's why we've broken it up like this, if you're wondering why we didn't put it all in the afternoon. We thought it was important to break it up. So as Chair Scott said, the college has received a petition with signatures from registered voters that come from within the territory that is encompassed within the Robstown Independent School District. The petitions were submitted by a specific purpose political action committee named Robstown for Del Mar College, and the purpose of the petition is to ask you to hold an election on the question of whether or not the territory encompassed by Robstown ISD, which is not currently in your taxing district, should be brought into the college district. And this is an election that would be taking place in November. So we're going to review the Texas Education Code provisions. It's 130. It's 130.065. I'll be doing that. Ms. Keys is going to give you some general information about what we're doing in Robstown now. And this is all about, this is all just to bring you up to speed. And then we'll talk about steps moving forward. And then a little later in the agenda, you'll actually have an opportunity to, to take action if you wish. The other thing is that if you have any legal questions or questions that you feel are of a legal nature, you can always raise those in closed session before you take action. So... You'll recall, this is real basic stuff. We went over this, the last time we briefed you on this, that Texas public junior colleges have two distinct areas. I mean, there's a service area that's, that's, that's provided to you by the, by the legislature, and then there's the taxing area, which is smaller than your service area, that you can control and govern. And that's basically was created when you first came into existence. The service area for Delmar College, again, is a refresher. Includes the Corpus Christi, West Oso, Cal Allen, Teloso Midway, and Flower Bluff Independent School Districts. Any area located outside of those school districts that is within the municipality of, of the city of Corpus Christi boundaries. Also, Nueses, San Patricio, Aransas, and Kennedy Counties, and the Rivera Independent School District. That's your service area. So, the Robstown Independent School District territory is within your service area. Now, how do you expand your taxing boundaries? Generally, you can do it by contract or election. Election is the most common method. So, annexation of territory by election is a bit of an involved process. It requires the submission of a petition that must be signed by registered voters in the territory that, that's, that's trying to get in, or that, that's the subject of the effort to bring them in. There also has to be a proposed service plan prepared by the district and published. And there's got to be a public hearing. And then, the election is called at the time at which the, the annexation question will be voted on by the voters. This is the specific language from .065. On the presentation to the Board of a Junior College District of a petition proposing the annexation of territory to the district, you may call an election on the question of annexing, of annexing the territory. The petition is required to have a, an accurate description of the territory proposed for annexation and be signed by a number of registered voters in the territory proposed to be annexed, equal to at least 5% of the registered voters in that territory as of the most recent general election for state and county officers. In this case, that would be November 2020. After you receive a petition and signatures have been validated, I'm going to give you a heads up. But that's, we seem a little clunky is because we've been, we had an excellent team, and I want to give them a shout out now. Ms. Jessica Alanese, who's our Director of Risk Management, and Ms. Deborah Sanchez, who's the Executive Legal Assistant in the Office of General Counsel, were both the review and validation team. And they've been working pretty nonstop since last week, looking at all the signatures. We also have in this, a name that's familiar to you, Mr. Kabi Caputo and his law firm, that had been providing us with technical expertise. They've gone through this with Austin Community College more than once. And there's also been a lot of consultation with the Texas Secretary of State's office just to make sure that everything was being done correctly. And they've done a phenomenal job of going through the signatures and, and validating that there are sufficient number of signatures to go ahead and, and proceed forward. So, that's giving you a heads up, but we'll get you some more details in a bit. Okay, so here's where it gets tricky. Before you can actually order the annexation election, you've got to hold a public hearing within the territory that's being proposed for annexation. So, in this case, it would be within the territory of the Robstown Independent School District. Now, the hearings got to be held not earlier than the 45th day and not later than the 30th day before the date the Board issues the order for the election. See, I told you it was tricky. I mean, so, we've got, we've got a proposed timeline, and I was just kind of chuckling to myself, Chair Scott, because you were saying, well, we might have to have another meeting to go over, you know, the, the budget. So, I, I'm trying to give you a heads up that you may need a special call board meeting, because the timing may not work exactly with when your board meetings are set up. So, in any event, you've got to hold a public hearing at which, at which time the public will have an opportunity to come and provide you with public comment and input on, on the proposed ballot measure.
And that's in Robstown?
It's in Robstown, correct.
School District?
Robstown Independent School District territory.
Territory.
Anywhere within those, those boundaries. Now, not later than the 30th day before the date of a public hearing held under subsection B, the Board shall complete and publish a service plan for the territory proposed for annexation. Now, the service plan is informational only. And that's highlighted because, of course, there's going to be, there, there won't be anything in it that can be construed as advocacy. You can't pitch for or against when you're putting out the official service plan. The service plan is obviously something that you would direct staff to prepare and to bring to you at a future meeting for, for review and ultimately approval to be published. The service plan has to include the maximum property tax rate that the Board may adopt, the most recent property tax rate adopted by the Board, any tax rate increase proposed or anticipated to occur after the annexation, the tuition rate that would apply after annexation for a student who resides in the district.
Can you stop, can you go back to that?
Sure.
What is the difference between the maximum property tax rate that we could adopt? And obviously, I know what our most recent property tax rate is.
As I understand it, we do not have, Mr. Johnson or Mr. Garcia, we don't have a maximum tax rate. That's something that's usually adopted by the institution. And so, they'll have, you know, they'll actually have a maximum tax rate that they've adopted. But I don't think we have one.
Some, some colleges impose upon themselves those kinds of ceilings.
Right.
Okay. So, it's possible to say we don't have a maximum rate?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. I didn't think we did, and I didn't know the difference between number one and number two. Thank you.
We asked the same question, and that's what, I think Austin Community College, for example, does have a maximum property tax rate.
And is that a maximum tax rate ever? Or is it within some timeframe?
There's another statute that may outline a different number that is not imposed. And so, I'm getting that information, Mr. Garcia. So, there's, there's two different things going on here.
Yes, so, there is a maximum tax rate that is defined at the state statute level. Ours is 50 cents for the M&amp;O rate, and for the debt service is 50 cents. A total maximum rate of $1.
So, that would be it?
Yeah.
By state statute.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think at some point in time in the history of the college, the college had a decision or voting by process of a vote decided on those maximum rates. And it, and, and it doesn't change. And I think that's true for most, if not all, community colleges. So, we, yeah, so I'll just leave it at that.
So, number one could be that statutory cap?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll get that clarified. Okay.
Now, the order for the election, like I said, it's, it's, you can issue an order for an election to be held in the territory on a uniform election date that is not less than 45 days after the date of the order, and that affords enough time to hold the election in the manner provided by law. Okay? So, November 8th, 2022 is the, the date of the general election this year. So, you kind of work backwards from that. And that's what we've done. The, the only fixed date is August 22nd, 2022. That's the date, that's the last date by which you would have to order an election in time for November 8th. August 22nd, 2022 is, is, is the only fixed date. You can work with the others.
So, our target date for those decisions, though, is actually going to be our August 9th?
Correct.
Board meeting?
That's, that's the proposed timeline that's in your packet as a suggestion, but it's proposed, depending on how you want to work.
But that's our timeline for calling regional election as well. So, the, the idea would be that all those elections would be that decision we made on August 9th?
Yeah.
Officially called? Okay.
Right. You know, you, you'll conduct the election in accordance with the election code, and it shall be held only in the territory proposed for annexation. And only those registered voters residing in that territory are permitted to vote. So, only voters, registered voters that are eligible to vote in November 2022 in, in the territory encompassed by the Robstown Independent School District will have eligibility to vote. I'm going to tell you now, it's one of the questions we've asked. The, the County Elections Office has not been able to give us an idea of what, what it would cost. I mean, you know, we, we don't know that yet. They, they can't calculate that, and so, we're going to see if we can get some further clarification. But as of right now, they can't tell us what that specific election would cost us.
And that cost wouldn't be ours?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we, we'll do some estimates. I've already talked to, well, we have, we have a meeting with, with our, with Mr. Garcia to talk about those estimates and what they may cost, so.
By point of reference, in November of 2020, the, the, the cost for the general election was for us $148,000. That's what it cost us back in November 2020.
So, this would be, be an incremental cost for those precinct boxes, however many, there may be 5, 10, 12, 15, whatever number in Robstown ISD, those boxes?
That's what we're estimating. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so here's the timeline. Again, I hope you can see that, but that's working back and assuming that, you know, November 9th, I'm sorry, August 9th is the target date for, for ordering the election. So, with that, then, the period, the slotted time to publish the service plan would be between May 26th and June 10th. Okay, so that's four days short of your currently scheduled June 14th board meeting. And the time to hold the public hearing would be between June 25th and July 10th. And obviously, if you, if you, if you adjust the August 9th, you know, date, and you push it back and make it later, then it, it, it would affect the time slot for those other, for the, for the publication of the service plan and the holding of the public hearing.
So, if we have, if we looked at our June 14th meeting as the target date to look at a draft service plan, does the Board need to approve the service plan before it is published? Or could we just authorize staff to publish the service plan?
You could. I, I, I can tell you what I, I know from practice, what Austin Community College does is they, they bring it to the Board, so that you're familiar with it, and you act, and they actually ask the Board to approve it.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's staff-directed, you know, obviously, and, and you could do that.
So, then we'll have to have a special-called meeting in order to look at that draft? Because we can't make it before the June 14th? Okay.
Be focused, and it would be beneficial for the Board to have its signature upon it as we carry it over, and people understand that that's, it is officially backed by the Board.
And the statute actually speaks to the Board publishing the service plan? But, yeah, but we know that, you know, you're going to direct staff to prepare it and rely on them to tell you what's feasible, what's not. And, but as Dr. Eskemia says, you, you, you all should be aware of what you're putting up and, and, and putting out there in public. Okay, so, the form of the ballot, we're getting into the real technical weeds here, but this is how it actually looks. This is how it goes on, on the ballot. It'll be printed to provide for voting for or against. And the proposition reads as follows. Approving the annexation by the Delmar College District of the following territory. And the description will be the, you know, the territory encompassed by the Robstown Independent School District and authorizing the imposition of an ad valorem tax for junior college purposes, which is currently set at a rate of, to be filled in by Mr. Garcia, per $100 valuation of taxable property. So, that's what a voter is going to see and consider when they go vote for or against. I know, clunky, but that's by statute.
And does this incorporate both the M&amp;O tax and the INS tax? Do we separate the two, or is this? Are we only imposing one?
It's total rate.
The total rate? Okay.
And of course, there's nothing on the ballot to talk about the benefit to potential college students and their families.
Well, that'll be, I mean, again, the factual part of that will be in the service plan that's published ahead of time. But not on the ballot, right? Answer your question, your specific question is, no, it won't. So, the measures adopted, obviously, if there's a favorable vote of a majority of those voters voting on the measure, if the measure is adopted, then you shall enter an order declaring the result of the election that the territory is annexed on the date specified in the, in the order. Okay, here's where it gets a little tricky, and I do not have answers. It's another good reason that we have, Mr. Caputo is going to be assisting you with this, because steps down the road, not to be determined or even figured out today, but steps down the road, you should know that should this ultimately be successful at the ballot box, it's going to impact your, your, the way your districts are set up. We, we went over this concept at one, at one time when we talked about this, you know, whenever we gave you a briefing on this before, but that's what's going to happen. And again, just wanted you to be aware of that. It's supposed to be, you know, the, the newly annexed territory is supposed to be attached to a single-member district, but you'll see in a minute, we've got, let me just get to the map. Picture's worth a thousand words. That can be assigned to one or more of the existing single-member districts. Bottom line, lines would likely change in the foreseeable future. And there's the map. So, you see how you're currently set up, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and, and, and you see the area, the shaded area that encompasses the Robstown Independent School District territory.
There seems to be an obvious district.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say three, you know? Yeah, but, but again, you know, you never know. You, you all did a great job of going through that and, and doing a lot of pushing and pulling and factors consideration, and you would, you would have to do that all over again.
I guess as soon as practical.
Yeah. I mean, it...
But prior to the next Regent election, we wouldn't have to do a special-called election for Regent's single-member districts. We would reapportion our current single-member districts prior to 2024.
Right.
Exactly. I believe there's a two-year...
Is it two years?
I, I, there's, I recall that, so let's make note of that to verify. Lenora, I know we've talked, we've gone through these scenarios times before, and I believe you, the, the Board will have two years to, to election, well, two count and two years from the election.
Well, 2024.
Number 2024.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it seems like it would make sense if Robstown votes to join us and be taxed that they actually have official representation as soon as possible on the Board of Regents.
So...
Not waiting two years to...
Well, I, I think that's according to statute. That is not a, a, a policy. So, I will have to unpack that, verify that, unpack that, and see if it's absolutely two years or up to two years. And so, truly duly noted, and that, that is a nuance that we would have to parse out on the, on the process.
I'm sorry, it's, it's a detail, we're, we're not going to necessarily answer that today. You don't have to. Along the way, we'll, Mr. Caputo, we actually asked him to be here. He, he, he couldn't because he had a, a prior engagement, but he is available by phone. And if we needed to touch base with him during closed session, for whatever reason, we could do that. But again, he's just shepherded us through that process, and so, I'm sure he'll be able to answer that question.
Okay.
All right. So, there it is, just up close and personal. That's the territory that is the subject of the annexation petition. And that would be on the ballot. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn the baton over to our dear friend, Ms. Keys, who's going to give you a little bit of background on current services at Robstown ISD, what we're doing there now. Again, just to give you background on it.
Thank you.
One, one other detail, I believe that, Regent Kelly, just going back to it, I'm just recalling some, some, some experience there, is that I don't believe the taxation would start before the representation. They, they coincide. Whenever they start, they'll start together. I don't think that's, I think there's a, there's some legal language around that too, about how that has to happen. So, just, just for people listening out there and that sort of thing.
Well, that obviously makes sense.
It does. It, it does, but I want to, and I want to add that to the conversation for clarity, because I don't want any confusion. Again, still unpacking a lot of these details.
And with that, let me just say again, this is a step process, right? That's the way the statute is, is, is set up. You take it a step at a time. You're hearing this for the very first time today. You've obviously been aware that there, there's been an effort out there. Until two weeks ago, we didn't have the petition, we didn't have the signatures, and now it's real. And so, this is step one.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Okay. This next session, section will provide a little overview as to work that we have been doing in the Robstown Independent School District area, and then the impact it could have on the college and the community and the families there. Delmar College has been providing dual-credit services to the Robport, Robstown Independent School District for the last 20 years. And this is showing the headcount as we go... School District for the last 20 years, and this is showing the headcount as we go over the last five years, where we've served over 1,500 students. And so this has been very successful and very appreciated by the community. This has been, though, at our dual credit rate of $99 for a three-credit hour course, for a credit course. This is showing the overall impact to the college and the community as far as the taxes is how it would impact us. The information is from Nuasis County Tax Assessor, and indicates that using the present tax rate for 2022, that a net taxable value of over $616 million would come to the college, and the college would receive at that tax rate approximately $1,694,000 per year in additional tax revenue. However, to receive the same tax revenue as we have right now is in 2022, the overall tax rate could be reduced to .2277350. Additionally, the average taxable home in the Robstown Independent School District is $59,038. The tax impact to the present overall ta, with the present overall tax rate would be an additional $167 per year to that family. However, this is showing the benefit. This would be the benefit, as we would see, a significant benefit to the general population, not necessarily those students in dual credit. However, this is comparing how they would become in district compared to out of district. This shows a savings of $150 for a three-credit hour course in comparing in district rates to out-of-district rates, and this is assuming the fall 2022 rate, including your increase. Additional semester credit hours, and the difference between the in-district and the out-of-district shows a savings of $600 for the full-time student taking 12 credit hours. So I think that's a significant benefit to the students and the families in Robstown Independent School District. And that's just a brief overview. Honestly, this covers a lot of the basics that would be in a service plan. There would be additional information, of course, and narrative, however, these are a lot of the fundamental parts. And those next steps are, which, when we printed this on, submitted it on Friday, it said finalize the validation of petitions. We have now finalized the validation of petitions. Augie, did you want to address that?
Yeah, just, just to wrap up, exactly, that's why we, when we, when this went to print or to press on Friday, the, the validation process was still in progress, but like I said, that, that has now been completed. So you may vote to order an election, but not before you prepare and publish a service plan and schedule a public hearing, and, and then you can order an election for November 8th, 2022, following the timelines established in, in, in the statute. Any questions at this point?
Questions, board members? Yes, sir.
Just, I mean, I know what a service plan, in terms of the city extending services out for an area that's being, you know, considered, and is considered an annexation, but what is a service plan, and what is the logical timeframe to be able to develop a service plan, so that we know what to ask the staff to do?
We would be developing a service plan itself within the next month, really, to follow that calendar and to meet the deadline and share it with the board. The facts that are required by the statute are pretty much prepared in what we provided today. Those are the simple facts. Additionally, the good news is that Delmar College has already been providing dual credit within the school district for approximately the last 20 years. So we're already in the community, providing courses theoretically and fundamentally. I would think then we would look for how we could expand those services, perhaps, you know, this is where the creativity comes in, perhaps more night school for the general public, ultimately, and perhaps increasing the location. Those types of things need to be discussed and planned out as, as we move forward.
Yep. The other, the other thing I'd like to add, Regents, and Regent Garcia especially, is that, you know, that there, there are changes that'll happen, and so part of the plan will have to do with providing the information to the new constituents, if we will, about pricing and, and those kinds of things, and the benefits for their students. So those will be the clarifications. The differences of being in the tax base versus not, and those kinds of things are all part of the service, of, of the service plan. So obviously, and as, as Vice President Keys is saying, that it, we, we have longstanding history with, with, with our, our, the Robstown community. They're, they are a very close part of, integral part of our operations, and so lots of existing facility, you know, programs and, and programming already. So it, it, it's not, it's really clarifying what we're doing and what we're doing, and what we can do differently, to keep it simple.
Could the service plan include specifics on when the tax begins to be collected, and then when representation could be expected as well? I would think that in the next 30 days, we could clarify those questions around the, the tax collection as well as representation election.
Yes, all those things would be identified and spelled out. For example, I have an example of the, of the service plan that was provided in Austin. It was a two-page document.
Okay.
And summarized the data very nicely.
The other question I have, as you referred in your services, what we, what we've done for the last five years in continuing education and early credits slash dual credit, do we know how many of our current, just regular students come from Robstown zip codes?
Yeah, yes.
We can, yes, we do. I don't have that with me today, but we can calculate it by zip code. We can go back and run that data.
By home zip code would be an important piece to add to that, because it's more than just those students listed here.
It is.
We do have that broken down in the statistical profile.
That's, there, there are Robstown addresses that are actually in Cal Allen and probably in Tulsa Midway as well. So we have to be specific if we're looking just at Robstown ISD.
County Road 1889 is exactly what you're talking about. We know that very, very well. And so there are parts of Robstown that fall outside the school district. The municipality and the school district do not. And so I know the road, I know the areas. I don't, I, I wish I could project what's in my mind, that little map, but we are keenly aware, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So in our action item this afternoon, we'll have an opportunity to ask additional questions, if, if we have additional questions at that point in time. Again, we do have an opportunity to go into closed session prior to making a final determination, if we have legal, additional legal questions. I do want to say that we can also take public comment at that time on, on that item before we take action as well. I understand that we do have a representative from Robstown for Delmar College in the room, and so just want to invite that if at that point in time they'd like to make public comment, they're welcome to do so at that point in time as well.
That's right, Ms. Mayor Chair.
I, I do just want to express, at this point in time, I think it's exciting that we have a, a group of folks who are interested in, in bringing Robstown ISD into the taxing district and providing additional services as, as we can, and to have them be a part of, of the long-term success for Delmar College and for their students. And I think that's a, that's a very worthwhile and exciting venture for us to, to look at that opportunity. Are there any other comments or questions for Mr. Rivera and Ms. Keys at this time? Again, we'll have an, again, an opportunity to discuss this some more during our regular agenda, or during the, yeah, regular agenda items.
I didn't play all my cards. I've got a couple of details, so we can, we can set it up this afternoon, but no, you'd be thinking about it.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll look at our pending items, our pending business items. In June, we'll continue our strategic plan KPI workshops on goals five and six, and we'll hear our regular professional contract review, as well as a HERP update. It sounds like when we get to calendaring later on, we might have to do some work on calendaring a special meeting in June, so we'll have to think about that shortly. Other items in pending business, as you know, we're not having a regular meeting in July to allow our staff to have a short summer break, but we will have that special called meeting at the latter part of July for the budget.
Thank you for that. Christmas in July.
Christmas in July.
So, okay.
Pending business, you have something else?
Well, no, I was just seeing if the list was going to be brought up, but I guess, there it is. Thank you, thank you. Okay, okay.
Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda items, we have approval of minutes for March 8th, April 12th, called meeting and public hearing in April 12th, regular board meeting, acceptance of investments for April, and acceptance of financial reports for March of '22. Are there any items that need to be pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt our consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Garza. Any public comment on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of our consent agenda, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to our regular agenda, we have, yes, sir?
I do have one correction that I think is, is worthy of, of making, that we, we were checking our data, and, and, and I just want to make sure that we, we stand by this, because it's a, it's an important piece that we, we talked about earlier. It's about the eight weeks offerings at the Oso Creek Campus. This morning, we made the comment that is accurate, that the preponderance of courses on the Oso Creek Campus are in the eight weeks format, and so we got our numbers flipped in our presentation earlier. And so our team is already making the, the adjustments and sending me electronic smoke signals, I like to call them, in that our preponderance of our eight weeks courses are 138 eight weeks offerings in the fall. Remember, we're ramping up in fall from spring, and 68 16-week courses. So that's about a two-thirds, one-third situation. So I just want to make sure, the team, everybody's scrambling and so forth, and I just want you to know that that's important to us. That's important to that campus and the rest of the college districts, so just wanted to make that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we will have our regular agenda item number four, discussion and possible action related to changing, a proposed change of a naming for a gift of significance. Ms. McQueen?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Regents, and Dr. Eskamia. This was a, an item that was approved in February 2021 for the naming of the Maker Space in the STEM Building on the architectural first floor, which we saw today. We are asking to change that naming from the Maker Space, which is a series of three rooms, to one of the architectural labs. That naming opportunity is much more commensurate with the level of gift that the Ligamar families have given, and that's the recommendation. And you've got all the information in there, but the great news is you actually toured it today, so you got to see exactly what we were talking about.
This is the $1 million.
Yes, the Ligamar gift is a million dollar, which is an endowed gift, so these are scholarships that will be provided in perpetuity.
Regent Kelly has a question.
Is this a change that the family would like to see?
Yes, I've already taken them and then toured them, and they're quite happy with that change.
Okay.
Ms. Etchison?
I was just going to make a motion that we approve that suggested change.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Etchison and Mr. Kelly. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McQueen. Discussion and possible action related to the internal audit board status report. Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Chair. As part of our internal audit process, today for your review and acceptance, Dan Graves, a partner with Weaver, will provide you with an internal audit board status report. Dan?
Madam Chair, Regents, thanks for having us up here again for you today. I do have our status report over our 2022 internal audit plan. As you can see on our slide here, we have three different audits with a myriad of internal audit follow-ups. Those three internal audits this year are construction management, information security, and purchasing. We've presented these to you at a prior meeting for approval, so I'll just go over the preliminary scopes and tell you where we're at from a status standpoint. So we have started construction management. We've been through our internal planning cycle. We've met with management, gone through the planning. We've set the scope and objectives, and we've requested a lot of information. So our, our team is currently going through that and planning to be in the field, actually going through and, and looking at detailed documentation and testing in the coming month. You see here, the, the audit is going to include the scope of the master development plan, and then the construction cycle, all the way from the request for proposals and awards. So we'll go through the bidding and contracting cycle, all the way through project execution, looking at various elements of project execution and monitoring, as well as the accounting for the construction projects. And you'll see, I wanted to highlight there that we will include in this audit reviewing costs submitted for major construction projects. We'll actually do a detailed cost audit of some of the jobs and the invoices submitted by the contractors. We've got a lot of that information now on the major jobs. We're working through determining which jobs those will be, so that hasn't been determined at this, this point, but the audit will include those major construction projects. For information security, we are planning that internally, in our internal planning stages. We're looking back at prior audits that we've performed over information technology. This one will be a new area of information technology that we have not audited before. We've audited IT general controls, which is just the basic backbone supporting structure of IT through the college, but this is specifically focused on security. So you'll see the, the proposed scope includes internal and external security functions, logical access, which is, you know, user IDs, passwords, how do we get into the network, get into the system, physical access, compliance with PCI DSS, if you're not familiar with that, that's the credit card processing standards. So we have a team of specialists who, who focus on PCI compliance, and so they'll look at that, and then also disaster recovery as it relates to information security. Then we'll also look at purchasing. We've looked at purchasing before. Purchasing is scheduled to be in the summer. That's always been the plan for, for a myriad of reasons, but that scope is going to include basically non-construction purchases, because we'll have covered construction purchases and contracting in the construction audit, so this will cover basically everything else. We've looked at this previously in prior years, but it's time to look at it again. It's always a good health and wellness check when we start looking at anything from the bidding cycle to just normal purchasing, as well as purchasing off cooperative agreements.
Do you know when the last time you did the audit, purchasing?
Brandon, do you remember? I want to, yeah, I want to say 2016 or 17. It's been a while, so. And then we have follow-ups. So we have a handful of audits that still have follow-up procedures. As you've already heard, one of those is in student services and advising, so we will follow up on those. Grant management from 2018, we have six partially remediated findings. We've done follow-ups previously, had shown some progress on those, just showed that they're not completely remediated and closed out, so we will follow up on those. Admissions and registrar from 2015, those two focus purely on training and, and continuing education, so we will follow up on those. We've met with Ms. Holcomb on those a couple times previously. Student services, so documenting advising sessions and talking about timely accommodation letter acknowledgement. There were some procedural changes that the college was going to implement there prior to COVID, and we kind of put that one on the back burner, just because of all the COVID issues, so we didn't perform any follow-ups on that here in the recent past. And that would be it. So that's our internal audit plan and status. We've got a lot going on, and we're going to have a busy summer, and we should be able to bring quite a bit more to you before the completion of the fiscal year. In addition to these reports, we'll also have the annual internal audit report that we bring for your approval. So any questions?
So with all of these, let's see, the internal, the, the annual report happens in August, September?
The annual report is due usually the first Monday in November.
Okay.
And that's, that's when the report's due to be filed with the state auditor's office and a couple other agencies. So that's when the report has to be finalized. We just need to have all the reports finalized and approved prior to submitting that report.
So with, with a number of, with field work and some of these follow-ups to be done by June 30th, do we think we'll hear from you in August or September? When do we?
You'll hear from me in August for sure. I believe that's the current schedule, is, is we're scheduled to, to come back and present in August, and if we need to come back and present in September for any sort of wrap-up, especially on the, the purchasing, is where I might see that come into play.
I was just trying to get a sense for how long that August meeting is going to be. It's, it's, it's looking to be a good one.
I know we have a preset schedule, I think.
Yeah, the preset schedule is for August, and then October is when they come back and provide the annual report, which we have to submit by November 1st to the state.
Okay. Thank you. I was just, I'm just thinking, advanced planning in my head.
I understand, yeah.
Are there questions on this report for, for either Brandon or Dan? Hearing none.
And just for the board's acknowledgement, Brandon will be leading the purchasing audit. He led that as a senior manager previous to being a partner, so he'll lead that one going forward, so he'll present that one.
You started, and I heard you saying Brandon will be leading, and I thought you were saying leaving?
No, 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 lead, lead. Brandon's not going anywhere. We're not going to let him go anywhere.
Brandon's not going anywhere. We do need to have an action item to accept this report. Is there an action, is there a motion to that effect? Mr. Garza, and then Ms. Everett makes a second to that motion. Any discussion? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor accepting this report, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Strabos has a couple of action items for us related to the Oso Creek campus.
Regents, I hope you enjoyed your tour this morning.
You did.
It's a nice place out there, so it's good to see a dream come true. So, agenda item number six, under the regular agenda, discussion and possible action related to approval of the 2016 Oso Creek Campus Construction Project Change Order Number Nine. This change order is for $829,800. The specific items that are covered in this change order, it's the main building, audiovisual infrastructure, and miscellaneous request for information, STEM request for information number 143, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, drain insulation, and fire dampers. Q and A Arts Audiovisual Infrastructure, main structural, main building structural revisions, Q and A Arts, the smoke room and hood controls, Q and A Arts Bulletin 11, elevator cellular dialers, that we no longer have hard lines into our elevators, and so what we're having to do is put in cellular dialers for those, and that's a recent change from the code, as well as a change in our telephone system. The site graphics is a big one, it's $265,000. This is signage around the campus, this is part of what had been value engineered before, and so we're adding this back into the project. The office suite sound masking, and then STEM building request for information, and that's the bioscience lab requirements. And so that totaled in, the $829,800 paid for with the bond funds.
Are there questions for Mr. Strabos? Say, staff recommendation to approve change order number nine for the Oso Creek Campus. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Dr. Adami, is there a second? Second by Dr. Villarreal. Any questions or comments from board members? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of change order number nine, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, Mr. Strabos.
Discussion and possible action related to approval of the Oso Creek Campus bus stop easements with the Corpus Christi Regional Transit Authority. You heard about discussion this morning, and so we're asking for authorization for administration to negotiate with the Corpus Christi Regional Transit Authority for where those leases will be and the actual part of it. Corpus Christi Regional Transit Authority is paying for all the design and construction of that, and this will provide direct bus service to the campus.
Requested action item is to authorize administration to negotiate and execute these easements with CCRTA. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Hutchison, is there a second? Second by Dr. Villarreal. Any questions or comments on this item? Any public comment on this item? Should we ask our liaison board member Dominguez to give us comment? Our connection to CCRTA. I see no public comment on this item. All those in favor of adoption of this motion, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Regents, we're now ready to discuss item number eight, which is the discussion and possible action related to the petition submitted by Robstown for Delmar College. And the action item that staff is asking us to consider is, got four elements to it. I'll call your attention to the, actually, I'm going to let Mr. Rivera give the presentation, then I'll open it up for questions and comments.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I won't retread ground already, tread, but I did want to give you the details on the numbers regarding the signatures that were submitted. There are approximately 8,300 registered voters in the district, and the number is 5% of that, so the magic number was, that was needed, is 417. Originally, there were 482 signatures submitted on the petitions, and then 11 additional ones that came in a little bit after that, for a total of 493. Of the 493, 484 of those were ultimately verified. So met the mark, met that 5% pretty easily. So now that you have a petition in front of you with signatures, our recommendation is that you formally vote to accept the petition. So the board is accepting the petition as validated, and then to further direct staff to prepare a service plan for, to bring back to you for approval, and then publication. Until that happens, you're not really in a position to set, unless you want, the date for the public hearing. You can do that at the time that you receive the service plan. That would give us an opportunity also to bring back to you a recommendation, a location, and all of that. And then finally, ordering the election, that can't take place until the other steps are taken care of. So for today, the recommendation is that you accept, that someone move to accept the petition for annexation as presented with the validated signatures, and to direct staff to prepare a service plan to bring back to you for approval and publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. At this time, are there any board members who need us to go into closed session to ask any legal advice of our general counsel before we proceed? Just wanted to offer that opportunity for any legal questions. All right, seeing none, additional discussion on this item, and then we'll open it up for a motion and second, and then ask for public comment on this item as well. So any questions from board members or comments from board members?
I'd certainly like to hear the public comment.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Seeing no questions from the board, is there a motion to accept the petition for annexation and to direct staff to prepare a service plan for approval and publication?
So moved.
Mr. Kelly makes the motion, Dr. Adami seconds that. So with that, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on this item? We do have a three-minute for your comments, and then you can answer questions from the board if there's additional questions from board members, but.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the time. My name is David Petrick. I'm the treasurer of Robstown for Delmar College. I just wanted to express that I think the community's excited for the opportunity to vote on this in November. It's been a great experience to work with the community and get these petitions, and I've owned a commercial building in Robstown for the last 30 years. My concern is, is that Robstown's population during that time period has decreased by 15%, while Corpus Christi has increased by 28%. So what I'm hoping is that this will turn that trend, if we can get Delmar College to come to Robstown and help the community turn that trend upward. What I was also concerned about is that the median income of Robstown's $35,000. Median income of Corpus Christi's $55,000. So it, and there's, I think there's about 400 people in the Robstown Independent School District going to Delmar College. It just doesn't make sense for those students to be paying more for tuition to go to Delmar College. And I think future generations are going to appreciate paying a lower cost to have that opportunity to come to Delmar College. But anyway, thank you for your time, and I look forward to working on the campaign. We, so what I'm struggling with now is when do you start to campaign? You know, the service plan is another, after, we wait another 30 days, and then we got the board, so that's one thing I'm struggling with. So, questions or?
Thank you very much for being here, and we appreciate your efforts to gather the petition signatures. Thank you and your group for doing that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. So I think what we'll hear is, we'll have to have a special called meeting to accept, to review and adopt the service plan, and at that point in time, we would also then call for the public hearing. So potential communication from the college about the facts associated with the service plan, and the facts associated with the election, probably do, as we've done with other special elections, do a dedicated short-term webpage so that that information is there. And then at that point in time, if there is a group that is advocating for its adoption, they could prepare based on that service plan and do it from that standpoint. So we can't call the election until after the public hearing. So we, even if we accept the, we accept the service plan and set the public hearing, we can't set the election until afterwards.
Right.
Okay?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions?
And I forgot to say, we have the actual petitions here, if anybody wants to. I wanted that to be on the record. The actual petitions are here with the original signatures, Ms. Alanese safeguarding them in the back, but trust me, they've gone through those and scrutinized them.
I appreciate the fact that y'all have done that on our behalf. Thank you very much for that.
And I want to thank Ms. Alanese and Ms. Sanchez again. They did a great job in getting it done in a short order, so.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Any other questions, any other public comment? All those in favor of adopting the motion as stated, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your work on this, Mr. Rivera, and again, thank you to the representative from Robstown for Delmar College for being here today. We are going to go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with legal counsel regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer and the seeking of legal advice from counsel with possible discussion and action in open session. Under Texas Government Code 551.087, regarding discussion or deliberation of information received from a business prospect with which the college is conducting economic development negotiations and/or the deliberation of an offer of a financial or other incentives to business prospect with possible discussion, action, and open session. And under Texas Government Code 551.074A1, regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, disciplines, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, including the annual evaluation of the college president and president's contract. The time is 3:02 PM, and I'm going to ask staff to make sure that we have Mr. Bennett set up for closed session in the other room. Great. Thank you very much. We are going into closed session at 3:02. We're coming out of closed session at 3:42 PM. There are no action items out of closed session. We are going to look at our calendar now. As Dr. Eskamia reported earlier, we're so excited, we're going to have spring graduation next Friday, but before that, we are going to have service awards this coming Thursday in the Rotama Room in the Harbin Center. In June, we are going to have our regular board meeting day on the 14th, but we will need to look at a board meeting maybe on the 3rd or the 7th prior to that June 10th timeline. I'm going to ask staff to quickly come up with what you need in terms of timing, but you said June 10th was the latest we could have that, that meeting. So do you want to try to do that today, or do you want to come up with a recommendation, Delia, and get back to us and poll the board? Yeah? Okay.
Yeah, I think that works.
Okay. Then, then we will also, at that same time, we'll have to, we'll have to have a quorum of that meeting, so we don't have to have all nine regents there, but we do have to have five of us there. And the same thing for the public hearing that would be held in Robstown ISD boundaries sometime in early July. And so that would have to have a quorum of the board there as well. We will not have a meeting on July 12th, but we'll have our budget workshop on the 26th. And Natalie, you'll get save the date or hold meeting notices out for that workshop so we can hold that, those dates accordingly. Anything else for calendar, sir?
Just one detail, the employee service awards breakfast is from 8:30 to 9:30 in the Rotama. The award ceremony is at 10 o'clock, so if that makes a difference to your attendance... Oh, what did I say?
It's 10 o'clock at the Richardson.
Okay. That's what I meant to say. So thank you. Yeah, so Rotama is the breakfast, and Richardson Performance Hall is the ceremony, so at 10 o'clock. So if you're not doing both, or one or the other, or whatever, just a little, little detail there that... Thank you, Tim.
Gotcha.
Dr. Eskamia, do you have a preference for, if we can only make one of those, the breakfast or the actual event, do you have a preference?
Whatever's convenient, whatever works for you. We appreciate any, and if y'all do attend, any of the regents, please just let us know so we can prepare accordingly. Thank you.
For those who are attending graduation, you should have your information and parking pass, and Mr. Bennett, Delia's going to mail this to you in case you can join us. Anything else on calendaring? If not, we will stand adjourned at 3:45 PM. Thank you all.